Good morning, everyone. Again, I apologize. I am not there in person. We'll do the best we can here. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 13th of 2020. And with us today, we have Luann. I expect is there. I don't see her. I do see her. Luann, our executive assistants in the background, and we have Kelly from the newspaper and Teresa from the radio I see. And I don't see too many other ones. I have, I think Larry's there. I don't see him yet.
Yeah, I'm waiting to get the lead in.
Hey, Todd's there. Clearly he's there. And we have Todd, our interim engineer, and Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. And Lisa is our county auditor, and she is present and happy as can be. I see the smile on her face.
That's right.
That's a big red smile.
That's right. I could just put a big smile, yeah.
Did I miss anyone? Okay, so we will start with our, on our agenda, first on our agenda is Todd Kenny from my Clausen, our interim county engineer and our assistant to the engineer. Mike, Todd, who's there?
Everybody's there.
Okay. Morning, Mike.
Morning.
Morning, Mike.
The first thing we have is a field entrance for Martin Anders. It's on Centerville Road, Prairie Springs Township, Section 19. It meets site distance requirements. We asked the board to approve that.
So, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the farm entrance on Centerville Road, Prairie Springs, Section 19, from Martin Anders as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, next, we have several utility permits. The first one is from a Coca-Cola Valley Electric in Attic Creek Township, Section 20 and 21, is to replace a pole and bore under D-61 for our new residents on the Bellevue Cascade Road. We'd ask the board to approve that.
Oh, moved.
Motion and second to approve the utility permit from a Coca-Cola Valley Electric and Attic Creek, Sections 20, 21, to replace the pole and two directional bore under D-61, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, next, we have a underground permit for Lamont Telephone Company and Jackson Township, Section 17, is to bore a fiber optic under County Road E-17 to residents at 32750 150th Street. We'd ask the board to approve that.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to approve the utility permit for Lamont Telephone Company, Jackson Township, Section 17, to bore under E-17 to residents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Next, we have a utility permit for Windstream Iowa Communications. It's for Tatum Moore Township, Section 24, is place a copper cable around the bridge we're going to do on 341st Street. We'd ask the board to approve that.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the utility permit for Windstream in Tatum Moore Township, Section 24, for replace the copper cable on 341st Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
And the next one is for Windstream Iowa Communications. Again, this is in Bellevue Township, Section 6, is to place a 12 pair of copper cable near the bridge we're replacing on Mill Creek Road. We'd ask the board to approve that.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to approve the utility permit for Windstream in Bellevue Township, Section 6, on 30327 Mill Creek Road, as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, and then the last thing I have, I guess, we had a call from Trader Construction. They said that they would have time this fall if we were interested in doing another day labor bridge. I guess it's up to the board. If they want to do that, we would have to amend the budget for that.
I can say absolutely.
Yes, I think that motion could prove.
Oh, I got a couple of questions. So, is this one that we approved for next year already though, correct?
Well, it's probably one of them that we were looking at for next year.
Yeah, so we were talking about.
One of the, Todd says, one of the extra bridges we've been talking about.
Yeah, so we talked about one down, you remember the streets?
364th Avenue was the first priority.
364th Avenue was the first priority.
And then 200th Street was the second priority.
And 216th was the second priority.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think that is certainly something I understand, maybe he is behind on one of the jobs because of deratio, and he has opportunity to do that. So, yeah, I'd certainly think that'd be the way to go. Mike, Todd, what do you think?
Yeah, so I think what the next step would be to solicit a quote from Trader, get a bit of a quote from him, and then we could present it to the board and they could approve it. And then that would be the, we still need to, Alex has given the span length. I've run, I've done my rating spreadsheet. I just need, and I've had a conversation with Dan about what, we don't have beams for it, so we're going to have to see what beams Dan has available. And I might have to tweak the design to see what he has for used beams that we can use on the bridge. But then, once that's done, then yeah, he can get us a quote and then we should be able to move forward.
Okay, it was my understanding, Todd, that beans, we changed the day labor bridges from the wood deck type to the concrete deck type, that he's only using less beams on the other two bridges, so he would have the amount of beams he needs.
So, yeah, if you remember, we, we had five more W-33 by 130s, so we used basically half the beams. We've already said we were going to use those for 525th Avenue, because that requires a 50-foot span. The 364th Avenue one, the first priority bridge, that's only needs to be a 40-foot span. So I don't want to cut 10 feet off the beams. So we're looking at used beams that Dan has in inventory that more match the span length we need, so we don't have waste on the beams. Because Dan's not going to take brand-new beams and cut 10 feet off of them and use them.
No. That would not be a smart move.
Okay.
I didn't hear what he said, but he, I thought, he thought it was funny.
Just pound them in further.
Pound them in farther.
No, they go horizontal.
Put a longer bridge than we needed.
Oh, yeah, put a longer bridge in than we need, Mike said.
Dig the hole bigger, yeah.
Well, here's the deal. If we use used beams, it's going to be less expensive than using these new beams anyway, because I'll put the screws to Dan, but we should be getting these beams for 20 to 25 cents a pound for structural steel versus what's new. Didn't we pay like 48 or 50 cents a pound?
Right.
Sounds good to me.
Me too.
We need to make a motion to proceed, or how do we, what are we looking at here?
We'll just, we'll just, I don't think so. We'll just get a quote, and then we'll bring the quote back for your formal action.
Okay, because we don't have action on that, so it's just discussion. Yeah, that's perfect.
Sounds great.
That's all I have.
Any news on our damaged bridge yet from IIW? Any repair cost estimates?
I emailed IIW last week. They said they'd have something to me by Friday of last week. I did not receive that.
Oh, gosh.
It says they're very close to having a detail for repair.
And we submitted our application, our request for that bridge to be replaced with the new program. We did that?
Yes.
Yep, that's been done. I would go back to the office and tell them it's past Friday. Do you have our figures for us? The board's waiting.
Hold them on.
Yeah.
Hey, Mike, again, I had a couple of complaints yesterday. You will follow up with, is that correct?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at that yet. Roger went up and looked at it, but we're going to be talking to him about that.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions for Mike or Todd? Anything else for us, Todd, Mike? If not?
Do you want to update on any of the project construction work?
Yeah, I can give you an update on the projects, I guess. High Bridge Road, we still have two more pours to do on that box called, but one of them's going to be today or tomorrow, and the other one possibly Friday or Monday. And then all concrete will be poured there. Traders have moved off the bridge on Mill Creek Road, and Jake Chekels up there with S2 Construction, starting the dirt work on that. That shouldn't just take too long. It's not real heavy work grading on that. Traders are going to start on 45th Street Day Labor Bridge tomorrow. They moved, we're supposed to move cranes in today down there and block the road. So, and then once they get done with that one, then they're going up on the 341st Street Bridge at the end of the month on that one.
Um, Mike can show me pictures of, up at the bridge, and Trader just moved out of, about the tree removal and all that. So the site distance around that curve is, because that was a concern about school buses coming down around there. But based on what I saw, and I don't know if you guys have seen the pictures, but it sure looks like, yeah, there's plenty of site distance there now. Because you can see from the top crest of the curve, you can actually see the bridge all the way down.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So, did they take, did they take some off of that?
They didn't remove rock. They just took trees out and limbs blocking the building.
Yeah, that's what I heard the problem was, basically, yeah. So, I had one other, one other complaint that said the rock was projecting too far, but that's, that was one of our frequent complainers, so.
Oh, so I got two quick things. We got these cross-sections from Alex for the Catfish Hollow Road that we were talking about, trying to do that. We're going to, I'm going to email these to Jake. He gave us an initial cost. I just want to show him these. So if he's got any changes and he wants to make those cost estimates, then I'll bring it back to the board and see what you guys want. If you want a budget for that work for next year. And then I'm going to talk to Mike today. We kind of talked a little bit about what we need to do based on the ICAP review of the facilities. There's some small things, so we should, should be able to get that done and get a response to Becky, so she can respond to ICAP.
That'd be great.
I think that's it.
That's all we got then, I guess.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen.
Just on a side note, ICAP was here, did a site visit. We do need to make a few changes to the building also, minor, but Becky has talked to Marty, and, and we need to, we need to purchase a few things and do a few things. But other than that, I think we pass the audit relatively unscathed, so, yep.
Okay. Are there, I don't see any, are there any other visitors or citizens that would like to comment at this time?
No, Steve Schrader is, has joined the room.
Hearing none, we will move on to our next agenda item. Steve Schrader, our Jackson County Deputy, Chief Deputy. Dave?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
So I had Clinton County reached out to me a week and a half or so ago, and they informed me that they had a nine-person transport van that they were looking to get rid of. And when I spoke to Lieutenant Harmon, you know, he knew of our situation up here and, and our transport issues, because obviously they hold some of our inmates, so it's Dubuque County and Muskegon and Henry and what have you. And he was just wondering if it would be something we'd be interested in. He said, the van is a 2008 E-350 transport van. It's got 76,000 miles on it. It's got three compartmentalized cages in the back. Each compartmentalized cage houses three individuals, so you can house nine inmates at one time. The back section does have rear air and rear heat for summer and winter transportation. It is equipped with a camera system in each compartment, and it does have audio and visual capabilities. He said, if you were interested, it becomes fully furnished. I'm going to leave the radio in it, which is, you know, probably about a $500 radio. All the lights are on it. It's striped. The only thing that we would have to do is change.
Take the clip.
Yeah, and.
It looks good. I went over and drove by it.
I sent to the board some.
Yeah, I saw the pictures and then I drove by it.
Yep, and we, we went down and looked at it on Friday, the jail administrator, myself, and talked to Steve Bees, the Chief Deputy, and Lieutenant Harmon about it. And he said it boasts for 10 grand, and he said they're, they're going to trade it in. And they offered them 6,500, so they would sell it to us for $6,500. So I talked to Lisa about it, and, you know, with not knowing where the jail is going to end up, you know, we very well may need something like this in the future. And I just thought maybe it might be a good idea for the, you know, to approach the board and see if you'd be interested in maybe acquiring the van. The way they got it worked out, they found another van that they're going to, that they're going to purchase. And I think it's up through Monticello. And it's going to be a trade-in, but it's basically the trade-in price is $6,500, which is going to come off their top end. And then we could kind of check to Runde's, I think it's Runde's.
Yep, R-U-N-D-E, yes.
Yeah, and basically the vehicle would stay here. It's in our parking lot now. It does have a little rust on one of the corndials. It's not much. You know, we can get that fixed, I think, for a minimal cost. But other than that, the van runs pretty well. And I think, you know, it'd be good if the board would consider maybe doing the acquisition. And that way we have something that we can call back on in the future.
Well, obviously, we don't need, know what our needs are going to be in the coming months and years. I think it's an opportunity we should take advantage of.
And even if everything goes.
Yes.
It's still going to be a couple of years out, so we need to deal with that.
Well, and just to let the board know, last week, a week and a half ago, we've, we had 18 people in jail. Okay, so we were housing, I think, nine out of county.
I saw that in their claims.
Yeah, and I think currently, right now, I think we're maybe at 12 or so. And with COVID going on, you know, we, you know, we're walking on eggshells over there.
Sure we are.
Keep it out of the jail.
Yep.
So, like I said, I think it's a pretty good, pretty good deal, but I wanted to run it by the board and see what your thoughts were.
I guess I had the opportunity to come over yesterday evening and look through it. It really looks like there's more equipment in that thing than $6,500. It's amazing what's in there for equipment. I mean, even your dash cam and your, and your compartments are, they're well constructed and look like top-of-the-line stuff. And it's clean. It's, it looks like a buy to me. Yeah, I don't know.
I would move, I would move that we purchased the van from Clinton County or from Runde, whatever, whatever. Yeah, whoever's going to have the title.
Yeah, exactly.
I got a motion and a second to purchase the nine-passenger transport van as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion carried. I thought maybe, you know, maybe if we want to rent that out sometime, my children might want to put maybe their children in each compartment for a road trip some.
It really would be.
So.
That way you can keep an eye on them while you're driving.
They can't get at each other, you know?
Talk to them in the back, so. So what I'll do is I'll reach out to Lieutenant Harmon today then, and tell him that the board made a motion to decree to. And I'll figure out our next steps, and I'll be in touch with Lisa and we can get this straightened out.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal too, so that's why. All right, that reading.
You too.
Okay, we're at the, we're to Lisa. Are you ready for your presentation there, Lisa?
Yeah, I am. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 6th, 2020 board proceedings as written by an authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the October 6th, 2020 board proceedings as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Mike, you're going to need a pen on this one. We are going to be changing the amount of our claims. So this morning, I need a motion is needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of $501,139.06 and also approve a handwritten warrant to the U.S. Post Office for $5,000 for the auditor's office business reply account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion.
New kind of.
There's a mortar grater in there.
I have a motion and a second to approve the warrants in the amount of $501,100, $501,139.06 and a handwritten warrant for $5,000 to the U.S. Post Office as presented. Any further discussion?
That's not the number, right?
It's not.
No, she said it was a change number.
Yep, someone submitted a claim this morning that Shelley was unaware of, so, yep.
And I think, I believe in that process. I heard Larry mention that we do have a $230,000 road grater, and we have $25,000 in salt mix that we hope we don't use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, there was substantial amount of rock that were applied to our roads too, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
This morning, the auditor's office is requesting the board chair to sign on behalf of Jackson County to enter, enter into a memorandum of understanding of enhanced security services agreement with the state of Iowa's Office of the Chief Information Officer's Information Security Division and Security Operations Center. This service is for an intrusion detection system, endpoint malware detection, cybersecurity training, including phishing assessments as well as vulnerability management. So last week, I had Luann email you all this, so you can take a look at it. It was quite a lengthy document. I have cleared it with Sarah, that she does approve of us signing this agreement. Mike, it does need to be an ink signature. It cannot be a stamp, so sometime I'll need to have you, if you approve it today, I'll need you to sign this, so we can email it to the state. But this is all part of cybersecurity and making sure that we are securing our system against any outside intrusion. We currently have this. It's been in place. I think, Mike, you've been in the, the operations center. I think if I remember a previous conversation, this is currently, right now, it's done for free. But at some point, they have a grant right now to cover the cost. And at some point, we maybe will have to pay for it, but this is a very worthwhile having them look over our system and to make sure that we are compliant. So I do request that the board chair sign this on behalf of Jackson County.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented. Any further discussion? I have a couple of questions, Lisa. You mentioned, you mentioned the cost, and in the memorandum, somewhere in that pages, I read that it's presented on Exhibit A. I did not see Exhibit A. But, and the chief information officer is who? Is that Bjorn?
Well, they, that's, that was kind of the question as far as the cost, I know, was on the back page, because Sarah and I looked at that. That was, because she said it is currently for free.
Okay, okay, I guess.
My page was. Page 19. 19 is Exhibit A. And the compensation 1.1 says that presently, there are no fees.
Well, that's what stays out.
Right.
Okay, and then, and then again, does that make our chief information officer, is that Bjorn? Is that also, or is that?
If the board wanted to enter into this agreement, or if you want Bjorn to sign it. I did show it to Bjorn. He said have the board sign it.
Okay.
But if, I can talk to Bjorn if you want to, see if he will sign it, you know.
Well, I think we're good with that. We're okay with it. Anyway, we have a motion and a second on the table. We'll just hold on. Any other questions? Any other questions for Lisa? I know, again, you said it was rather lengthy, and it is. I skimmed over a lot of it, or most of it, or part of it. If we have it in place, and we certainly, certainly don't want cyber criminal activity, so. That command center, by the way, Larry, I think you had a chance to see that too out there. It's amazing.
Yeah, it's an interesting place.
Okay.
It's right out of Art Wars or wherever.
Oh, wow.
It's kind of, it's kind of scary going down in there, I'm telling you.
Your story is below the Capitol Building.
Oh, yeah, we saw that. Yep.
Really?
It's TV screens.
Maps and everything all over the place. It's incredible.
I will tell you that I know that they caught a few things on Jackson County's behalf, and they called Bjorn and said, what's going on? Yeah, they do watch and they do see situations. Our situation was nothing from an outside source trying to get in. It was just some suspicious activity. And Bjorn investigated and took care of it. So, yeah, they do. It's kind of, he said it was pretty fast as they called him. Yeah.
I guess, like I said, it's kind of scary what they are watching, so be careful.
Yeah.
Yes.
A little bit similar to that.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second yet on the table to approve the memorandum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Just as an update today, if you remember, I think it was on September 18th, it was a Friday, where we had to pay the bill to Wells Plumbing and Heating for the repairs to the air conditioning system.
Yep.
And I have been visiting with the insurance adjuster since then. And just so you know, that the insurance company is still working on our claim for the air conditioning repair bill. And this is all due to the complexity of our claim, and the original adjuster has transferred this to her coworker who is best suited for the claim. So we, they haven't forgotten us. We don't have our, and I will stay on it. I just wanted to keep you, as the board informs, that we don't have our money yet.
Pass the buck, pass the buck.
I just wanted to keep.
All we can do is be hopeful.
That's, that's all we're trying to do, is to reclaim some of our money.
If the claim is complex and was the repair, it may take a while, yeah.
At least 22 days, right?
Turn the heat up a little bit.
Well, with the insurance, probably more like 44.
Yeah, probably, yeah. And that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, I set my agenda on the bottom. All right, we're back. Um, I see Ben is available, so if Lisa or Luann would hold on for a bit, we'll go through Ben's agenda.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I think on the agenda, we have a resolution of approval for Putman Buddy Place. I had introduced this in early September, so want to get that hopefully approved here today before we get a, or so we can get it recorded. Do any board members here, I only have paper copies, I'm sorry, Mike, about that. Do you need a refresher on where that's located?
Nope, I know exactly what you're talking about.
No, I looked at it. I looked at the paperwork. I looked at the property. It's pretty, pretty simple.
Yep, so yeah, two acres meets all the minimum requirements for the zoning ordinance, so I think it looks good as far as my department is concerned.
I do have a resolution in front of me. It is Resolution Number 771-10-13-2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution Number 771-10-13-2020 for the Putman Buddy Place plat, final plat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion carried. Was that extracurricular activity there that I heard, or what was that?
I'm not sure what that.
I'm not really sure what that was.
We don't know.
Yeah.
I thought it was on your side. Yeah.
We're blaming you.
Maybe nothing, no, I don't know. The bulldozer ain't running or nothing.
So I guess just to follow up on this one, what we just did, I've had a few calls, just kind of interested in. So that's, I think, is about 10 acres total as the parcel currently exists. So there's been some, I guess, inquiries about what to do with the rest as far as, you know, maybe another few subdivision lots, so I told them, like, if that's the case, the issue we have here is that these aren't very deep lots. You know, it might be, I think, 200 feet, 220 feet from the back. So, and having, you know, this new lot that's going to be recorded has an existing access out 362th Highway. The road along the west side of that is gravel, and, you know, had two acre lots thrown out, so could maybe make three or four. So, you know, potential issues with access there as far as, you know, would we want to have a frontage road of some kind, try to limit one access for all the homes, or, you know, have individual access. It's not really sure. Obviously, the goal would be to limit that. But haven't had anything concrete coming, you know, to my office, even a, like a sketch of what they want to do, so I'll just keep my head to the rails as far as what's going to happen with that. There was the property out on 150th Avenue. I stopped by there. No one was there, so gonna try to see if I can get ahold of someone this weekend, you know, I've not sent Kerry out to get them, give them service or call to view counties. I think that's where they operate out of, so, or the individual works at, just what I've heard, you know, not from, I don't know, any authoritative figures would actually know that, but what I assume as far as that goes, so, other than that, I don't have anything else, so.
So I had the opportunity, Ben, to visit Green Island again because I had a call. Mr. Lee has actually put up a pretty nice fence. I don't know what's behind it. Unless there's, unless there is concerns, environmental concerns or health issue concerns, it actually looks pretty good around there. You can't see much. He put up a pretty good fence. The problem lies, the problem lies with 49184 Green Island Road.
And I had, I had someone in my office, I think, last week to talk with me about that one, and I'm aware of that one, so, you know, I'll be making another trip out there to look at the property. They just got a lot of assorted odds and ends. They're also taking garbage across the street to dispose of through burning, which, you know, burn, you know, burning residential waste is, I guess, okay as far as the DNR goes, but you're not supposed to do it with recyclables, and obviously, anything else. It's very limited in what you're, you know, I know people are doing all sorts, you know, they're probably burning a lot more than just.
But doesn't it have to require you to have it in a container when you burn it, not just laying on the ground?
I'd have to look at the DNR's rules as far as that goes, but, you know, the size of, the size of it, the ash that would potentially blow around, and just the smell in general from, you know, everything that would potentially be burned, that's definitely an issue, so.
Well, I will say this, we certainly need to address this before we get two feet of snow. They made, they made an attempt to put up a, kind of a makeshift fence. They had a couple pallets that they nailed some tin to or something, but it's not covering anything.
Yep, absolutely, and I think, I know the people who are doing it, they have the one house, which is a mess, and then, yeah, they're taking all their stuff across the street, which is, you know, according to, according to the people that complained to me, the neighbors are okay with that somehow, you know, but it's definitely, I'll be heading out there, so.
So have you explained to them that it's only like seven dollars if you take it to a land?
I explained it to the guy out just west of Seveda and Taco John's, and, you know, he's like, yeah, you're right, so that's how he kind of did it. He got someone to help him out and haul it out there. I'm like, it's a lot cheaper than $150 to buy, so.
Without a doubt.
Follow up with it. If it has to be abated, we can abate it cheaper than that, so let's follow up with it anyway.
I will. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
I see, well, Luann, are you available?
Yeah.
I see her.
Yep. She is here.
Good morning.
Good morning. I snuck in your office last night. Did you see that?
I saw that. I saw the evidence that you had been here, yes.
I did empty the candy bowl, Larry, so.
Well, how'd you keep your mask on if you were eating candy? That's my question.
I put it in my pocket. And I paid for it when I got home, because it was still in there. It was rather soft.
Okay, calendar for this week. This afternoon, from 1:00 to 4:00, is ICAP's zoning webinar that I believe all of you are signed up for. From 1:00 to 3:00 this afternoon, this is not on your list, is the Iowa Veterans Conference, also by Zoom. So you're gonna have to make a hard choice somewhere in there between the two of those. At 4:00 this afternoon is a Macau River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Larry.
Well, that $20,000, that was, excuse me, for the watershed authority.
Water shit, yeah. I snagged it out of your pack, and I should have just left it there, so.
So Luann, have we touched base with Ben? I expect that Ben is going to jump on that zoning webinar. Is that correct?
I said it to him. I have not heard if he signed up for it or not, but I can check with him when we get done.
Yeah, I would.
I would certainly think that it's zoning, that's his kind of department, so.
Kind of his department? It is his department.
So I'll make sure he knows, get signed up for it. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 14th, at 9:00 a.m., Larry will be on KMCU's Just Talk. Also, at 9:00 a.m., I have a Jackson County Civil Service Commission meeting here in this office. From 1:00 to 4:00 tomorrow afternoon, Jack has a Regional Governing Board Special Meeting via Zoom for the CARES applications. Thursday. Sorry, go ahead.
I gotta, is that Civil Service Commission, is that a Zoom also, just if a person wanted to listen to it or no?
I set it up as a go-to meeting, so.
Okay. Send out the info on that, maybe.
Okay, can do that. Thursday, October 15th, at 6:00 p.m., Jack has a Limestone Bluffs RC&amp;D meeting. I think that's also via Zoom. Friday, October 16th, at noon, Jack has Workforce Iowa CEO Office Hours via Zoom. Monday is going to be a very busy day. At 10:00 a.m., I have the Waste Authority on there tentatively, but Frank says there will not be Waste Authority that day, so we can cross that off. 1:00 o'clock is the Children's Advisory Committee meeting for Jack. At 2:00 p.m. is the Regional Advisory Committee, also for Jack. And then at 3:00 p.m. is a Regional Governing Board meeting, also for Jack, and I think those are all going to be by Zoom, but they started to stack them up so that they only have to go one.
Bring your lunch.
At 5:00 p.m. is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Area Meeting via Zoom, also for Jack. And then at 7:00 is Together We Build Meeting for Jack, so I told him to tell me.
Lucky day.
Yeah, lucky day.
Told her I wouldn't see her much.
Bring a comfy chair, too.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to get a bigger seat cushion, I think. Okay, Tuesday, October 20th, is our next regular meeting at 9:00 a.m., and that evening at 6:00 o'clock is the Conservation Board meeting at Hurstville for Larry. The, the only business that I had, I guess a couple of things. One is the Emergency Food and Shelter Program Award. That is the award that goes to the food banks, and that is usually not a very big amount of money. This year, we had two different phases, they call them, combined into one, and we had only one application. So the $11,118 is all going to the Preston Mana Center, so.
Is there a lack of communication about that?
Actually, I actually think it is a fair amount of money, so congratulations to them.
Yeah, Luann sent the information to the person from the Macau Food Bank that filled it out the last time, and it was also in the paper twice, but nobody from the Macau area submitted a request. And they had a deadline of September 31st. They had to have it in by then. So a little surprised, but that's what we think are.
So there is that. And also, I don't know, Lisa, we talked a little bit about community reviews, that we needed to update the policy on community rooms right now. One is that if somebody wants to use one of those rooms, they need to be wearing masks or require in the public areas of the courthouse. And also, we had to say sanitize, clean out the tables when we're done, we'll supply them. That's what they need to do. You can say for the next group. Also, the last thing I have, and I guess this next, is we need to check up the global release for the. What we need to say about that.
Well.
So is that the same one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were informed on that last week. What was it, the 8th or the 9th? The 9th.
Right.
That they released, dismissed it on the 8th, so. That's the information we have.
It says we are no longer in litigation on that issue.
And this was the first notice that we had about this. The only other thing we had was what we heard over the radio station and in the newspaper that the county had made a decision. We had not. We hadn't even been notified by our attorney.
Yeah, that surprised me, too, when it came out, but.
Now, when I heard that on the radio, I thought, we have, they haven't even come back to us yet to tell us anything. So, you know, this was the first time we actually had in writing any information.
And that is.
And it was handled through our, through our insurance agency, ICAP.
Right.
So we couldn't accept it or deny it, because they didn't.
So we need to approve this release, or is that?
No.
No, we don't have to do anything. It's already done. Been done for us.
Yeah, and then since the attorney then has filed all of the motions, like you, just like you just said, you know, we're no longer in litigation, and this case is now closed.
We had, I guess, you know, we had tentatively agreed on a on a certain amount pending what the litigation with the city was, how it was coming out, so that was all behind closed doors with them. We had nothing to do with that, so. Okay, any other questions on for Luann?
I don't have for Luann, but, you know, we still have not met with the tourism group about the Welcome Center. It's going to be winter before too long, and I think, you know, they haven't been open. We asked them when we had our Zoom meeting before if we could get together with some of the members of their board and Tom and discuss the future of the Tourism Center. And I think we need to do that.
I think their board was going to discuss what the, what the future might hold, and maybe bring a proposal or an idea to us, but yeah, we all, if we all get together at one time, a work session or something, that would be.
Well, I don't, I don't want to wait forever to make a decision, because it's obviously, Marty has to make sure that something happens down there, and Marty has more than enough to do here. And we just need to decide what's going to happen. If we have to hire somebody from the Sevula area to do some of that stuff, I think we just, we just need to make a decision.
I agree, so Luann, could you make?
Mine and see when they can meet. It doesn't have to be due on a Tuesday during our board meeting. If we want to do it some other time, we can do it by Zoom, obviously. We all know how to Zoom. But I just, I would rather have a face-to-face, but if that's not possible, Zoom's okay. But I think we need to at least have an open dialogue about the future. Yes.
I agree. See what, see what you can get out of Tom for a timeframe, and if they discussed it, if they made any decisions on their end that they're willing to share, we certainly need to talk about it. I guess the other thing is that we need to bring up, I know we had a flyer from the Delaware County Jail. I don't know if we have anything positive from Marla or John that we can look at. Let's keep moving forward here.
I taught, when I talked to Marla, she had some of the information. I don't know, I see this note, but it may be have been from a while back. He, I don't know that she has the tax impact from John.
Well, that shouldn't be too hard. We know what the number is, so.
It says.
Didn't we see that? Didn't?
I thought we had, but this may be an old note. I, maybe it was upside down. I've talked, but I have talked to her about it, and that, at that point, she was gonna, I told her we were more interested in the one, not the trifold, just the flat one, and what we kind of wanted, and she was going to try to put a mock one together to send to us so that we could review it, and I said we wanted to have that probably by, at the latest, the 1st of December. So, and she's got some information about mailing them out and that sort of stuff as well.
Yeah, I seen that. Yeah, okay, so we keep moving on that. Again, after, after the election, we could move forward, or whoever can, someone can, and hope to keep, keep on the agenda with that, so we don't, it'll be here before we're ready, you know?
Yep. Also, last week, I talked to Shirley Pelnerick, and she said their jail is coming along really well. And she said Jeff would love to give us a tour of it as it is whenever we can go up. But she said if we wanted to come up individually, or if we wanted to come as a group, that, he said Jeff's taking all kinds of people through it. And she says it's, it's really going to be nice when it's done. And there, she said, but Jeff is really proud of it. He says he goes out there every afternoon at 4:00 to see what the progress was that day and talks to. He said, she says he doesn't get in their way, but he's just really anxious, and so. He, she said if there was ever a time that we wanted to come, we could just contact them, and Jeff would be there, or if we want to just call individually and go up and see it, that would be fine, too.
If I remember correctly, so I think we scaled ours down to, it's about the same size, 30 bed, is that correct?
Actually, when I was up there and looked at it during the summer, and I know from the floor plan that they had, that Jeff had showed me, it's very similar to ours. And so, you know, seeing it would kind of give us an idea as to what ours is going to be like.
I can go November 2nd.
I'll pick you up at 8:00.
Is that a two-day tour, Lisa?
Right, yeah, yeah.
You better rethink that one.
Hey, the other thing that I think we need to bring forth, too, the other thing, today is October 13th, and, you know, we're without a lease to ICAP in regards to the old Operation New View building and such, and, you know, I don't know who needs to light the firecracker, but it really needs to be done. We need to, I talked to Sarah yesterday. I said, have you? We need to, I talked to Sarah yesterday. I said, have you had any more contact with, um?
Jane?
Well, no, it's Jim. Jim. And so I, I mean, I just want to bring that out. We need to make sure that we stay on top of this, that we get a, you know, we have. I, I actually think what we need to do is to enter into some form of communication because we haven't had anything. You guys haven't talked to anybody and, and I, I almost wonder if we shouldn't, you know, have Luanne try and schedule up a Zoom meeting with these people to at least, hate to use the word negotiate, but at least let's talk about what the lease is about.
Well, you and I've talked about it several times and I know that they have been contacted saying that, you know, actually their lease are, the past lease was through Operation New View and it was sublet to CDI.
Right.
And they knew that that expired November 1st because, October 1st, because we told them that. Because we, we extended the lease so that it ran through the time, the rest of the time before ICAP would take over.
Right.
So they, they do know it.
Yeah.
They just haven't.
Well, I just want to bring that forward. I mean, what's the wishes of the board? How should we proceed to try and get this done?
Um, well, I guess who is, who is the lead on this or is it, is it?
Well, it's our building.
Okay, I guess we should have a conversation of what, do we want to keep the rent the same or are we going to raise it or where are we going? We should have a number.
Well, my understanding from talking to Lisa is when they did have an ish, a, an initial conversation with ICAP, they said, well, we'll just keep everything the same. Because, you know, we give in kind for the Head Start Program through a reduction in our, in our rate for our lease. And, um, I had forgotten, but Luanne and, uh, Lisa pointed out to me that there is a clause that each, each year it goes up 3%. The rent, so, um, but.
I just don't want this forgot. I'd want to make sure that we, I guess, I guess I'm asking to cross our Ts and dot our Is to make sure.
Do we need to initiate it and just say, okay, the 3% of this, and this is the amount due?
Well, is there anything else that you want to negotiate or put in it?
Well, I, I guess, you know, when you look at just, for example, what happened this week.
That's right.
I mean, I can understand us having to take care of the, the structural building.
Right.
And the parking lot. But I think if there's problems with some of the things inside that are humanly caused.
Correct.
It should not be our expense. And.
We needed to call a plumber. We had a plumbing issue and we had to call a plumber and.
And it was because something was flushed down the stool.
Right.
That was not toilet paper.
Right.
And so it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't our.
Had to go capture whatever was in the drain. Yeah, because it plugged up both sides, so, yeah, so, so we did call a plumber.
Could we actually mirror this type of lease thing of the way we have the Andrew Jackson committed to X amount of percentage of the expenses are, are theirs, like you said, if it's equipment that they're using or like, like this situation where it obviously was caused by someone that was there, so it wasn't our baby, you know?
And it wasn't a child.
Right. Right.
So it was repeated, repeated and repeated, so, um.
Yeah. So I guess maybe what we need to do is we need to get a copy of the lease that we had with CDI or Operation New View. And maybe we need to have Sarah review it and see if we need to make some changes. And like you said, Mike, somewhat mirror it, mirror it to our Andrew Jackson. So there's a, um, a little bit of some responsibility on ICAP's part as much as a responsibility on Jackson County's part. And we share that, some of those we need to share the responsibility on and some of them to be on.
I do believe we have a good agreement with Imagine, you know, as far as the equipment and, and some of that stuff. So, yeah, let's have, let's have Sarah do that, maybe make one up that we can, uh, review, um, and move forward, like you said.
Decide what you want to do as far as the rent.
Right.
Yeah, so there needs to be a discussion. I just want to make sure that we keep the wheels of government turning here and we get something so we can send them at least and say, this is what we're proposing.
Do we have any comparable grants that they're paying other places or that other people get for that?
I have no, I, I, I don't know that, that we do.
Yeah.
Where are we with the floor?
Yeah, where are?
That, that is going to be, that is going to be the responsibility of ICAP. They were told by the regional office in Kansas City that they would, they would pay for the new flooring. So I had, I had suggested to her, I told her who the two-floor people in Macau were that they could get some quotes and, um, if they wanted it done over the holiday weekend or the holiday week of Christmas, um, go for it. Um, and I also had told her way back when that it's not the most convenient time to be doing it. But, um, if they wanted to store their stuff at the senior center, I thought we could make arrangements for them to store the things there as long as they cleaned it up after it was, they were moved back. So they wouldn't have to rent a semi or something to store that stuff in. So, and of course, we'll have to let NEI3A know that that might happen.
That's all right.
Yeah, yeah, but they're.
There's not two feet of snow on the ground.
Yeah, and they're, they're, um, uh, it will not be an expense of ours.
Did they indicate what year they were going to do this?
Well, actually, they wanted to do it before school started, but, um, they didn't find out from the powers that be in Kansas City whether they would, or in Kansas, whether they would, um, have the funds to do it. And now they know they will have, so they'll move forward. But they can't do it now because the kids are in classes.
Yeah, okay, well, like you said, we need to clean up some of this stuff if we can and keep it moving forward, so.
And it doesn't sound like from when I talked to her, um, it doesn't sound like Marty's gonna do it. They're gonna hire it done, so that's great because we're pretty sure probably some asbestos there.
Yep. Okay, so moving on, uh, Marty is on the, um, agenda, but I hear there's a couple of things going on in the, uh, treasurer's office. And they also had to go out to Andrew Jackson Care and try to get his more moved for secondary roads, which apparently was dead.
Yeah.
So I did have several texts and reports from Marty this morning regarding the, um, lead test. And we're gonna try a couple of other things yet, as I understand it. And see where we got to go with that. We're gonna replace some valves in there that may have a lead valve in it, uh, per, per woods, um, plumbing. So we're still working on that also. And he also said he was very happy to be back.
Yeah.
Also, um, for just general information, um, uh, we have our Historical Society meeting tonight. But the last test that we had at the, um, Clinton Engines Museum, the air quality was safe.
Awesome.
And, um, with the new, uh, air exchangers that we've put in, the test came back and I'm gonna tell you, uh, Bonnie was really excited.
Oh, yeah.
But we can't take the signs down until they test again, and that's, they'll test again in six months. And if the quality of the air is, is still safe, then we can take the signs down that you can, can't come in if you're pregnant or want to be. So.
And I wasn't in, I guess.
Yeah. But, um, she was pretty excited about that.
That's good news.
Yes, it is good news. It's, the, the, the worst part of it is, um, uh, it really, really, it quadrupled our, uh, utility expenses with the new, with the new, yeah, exchangers. Yeah, because they're, they're huge. There's two of them and it really did.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a thing, that's a whole thing, too.
Yeah. So.
Okay, so is there any other boards or commissions or ports that anybody would like to share or we've pretty much went through them or? Any unfinished business?
I would move we adjourn.
I would second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting, motion is carried, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a great day.
Thank you.